America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt. Mr. Beistel.
Here.
Mr. Colero.
Here.
Mr. Fry.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Shipley.
Mr. Bent.
Here. Let the record show Cheryl Shipley texted me last night and said she's not available to make it to the meeting. Citizens comments?
I have no comment cards, sir.
Thank you. Minutes?
It's recommended that the board approve the minutes of the July 7, 2016 planning and voting meeting and the special voting meeting of July 28, 2016.
Need a motion, please?
I think I have a motion.
Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel. Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. Business and Finance?
It's recommended that the board approve the treasures report of June and July 2016 and the accounts payable for June 2016.
Need a motion, please?
Sir, move.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fry. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Colero.
Yes.
Mr. Fry.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bent.
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Oh, Business? Facility study?
Right. One of the things that I was asked to look at at the last meeting was the grade level configuration, looking at the possibility of making this particular campus a K6 campus and then making the high school either a 712 or an 812 campus. If it were an 812 campus, this would obviously be a K7 campus, so I did prepare a report and I'd like to go over that with you. When technology begins to work again, you'll all have that attached to your Board docs document. Mostly what we're going to do is go through things that are after 1990. Prior to 1990 and up until 2008, the Southmoreland School District had utilized five buildings. We had Alverton and Ruffstale, and those both housed grades kindergarten through four. Scottdale Elementary housed grades kindergarten through six. Alverton Elementary usually housed two or three sections of each grade level, and Ruffstale usually housed two sections of each grade level and later on, only one section of each grade level. Scottdale Elementary School usually housed either three or four sections of grade K to four and either seven or eight sections of the grades five and six, depending on enrollment. Attendance areas were often shifted to balance class sizes, especially due to the sparsity of population on the northern end of the district. It was difficult to fill classrooms at Ruffstale, so every year we were moving students from Scottdale to Alverton, from Alverton to Ruffstale, in order to get those Ruffstale classrooms filled. Ruffstale did not house special education classes, so students who were identified as eligible to have special education services had to be transferred either to Alverton or Scottdale to receive special education services. A feasibility study was conducted in 2004, so as a result of that study, as well as the prevailing research regarding mid-level education, a decision was made to construct a new building that was designed around a middle school concept adjacent to Scottdale Elementary School, close Ruffstale Elementary and reconfigure the grade levels in the district. Alverton Elementary was not renovated due to budget constraints at the time, so the new configuration would be, would cause a number of changes. We would change names of buildings. Alverton became Southmoreland Primary Center. Scottdale became Southmoreland Elementary School. We abandoned the former junior high school and eventually razed it. We opened this building. We housed all K1 students at the primary center. Two through five was housed next door at the elementary school. Six through eight was here, and we continued to house nine through 12 at Southmoreland High School. There were a lot of reasons for choosing that configuration and model. Just to summarize some of the advantages that were considered when we moved to what we call a 5-3-4 configuration. That means five elementary grades, three middle school grades, and four high school grades. That configuration supports the research findings that show kids today become adolescents much earlier than they did 50 years ago. Students' ages in this configuration more nearly parallel human development. You know, small kids, young kids remain young, they're in the elementary school. Students in this building are beginning to enter adolescence, and then high school kids are becoming young adults, so we paralleled that human growth. Students who are grouped more alike than either elementary or secondary students when we have a middle school student. The configuration appropriately meets the academic needs of students because students have an opportunity, when they're in middle school, to explore areas of specialization such as foreign languages, technology, STEM, those kinds of things, and that gives them an earlier opportunity to experience that broader curriculum in sixth grade rather than having them wait till seventh grade. The transition from elementary to middle school is generally smoother than a transition from an elementary to a joint junior/senior high school where you have seventh graders moving into a building with kids who are six or seven years older than they are. Gives fifth graders an opportunity to become building-level leaders at an earlier age. Students get a fresh start in a new school a year earlier, and they get to have two fresh starts, as a matter of fact, when they move from elementary to here and from here then to the high school. Students who are entering adolescence and pubescence aren't mingled with older students and young adults. We looked at some other factors. That was the economy of a three-tiered transportation system as opposed to a two-tiered transportation system, so we were able to put fewer buses on the road, and each of those buses put on more miles, which increased our ability to get reimbursement because you're reimbursed by the mile, not by the number of buses that you have on the road. That established a Southmoreland identity. We didn't have Ruffstale kids and Alverton kids and East Huntingdon kids. From the time kids entered kindergarten, they were Southmoreland Scotties because they were all grouped in one building. If you're a Southmoreland kid, you go to kindergarten in the same place. The economy of instructional delivery. Special education teachers, reading specialists could now be located in one building that houses the grade level they serve, so there was no need for travel. I can remember when reading specialists were traveling from Ruffstale to Alverton, nurses were traveling from Ruffstale to Alverton, and we didn't have to do that anymore. Also talked a little bit about educational equity. Now, if you're in fourth grade, you receive the same fourth grade curriculum that every other fourth grader receives. When we had three buildings, each building delivered curriculum a little bit differently, but that doesn't happen anymore now because we're all together. We also looked at Maslow and his hierarchy of needs, and what Maslow taught us in terms of psychology was that human needs are arranged in a hierarchy, and you have to meet those lower needs before higher-level needs can be met. So the lower needs include physiological needs, air, food, drink, shelter, warmth, and sleep, and after that comes safety needs such as protection from the elements, security, order, stability, freedom from fear. The next level is love and belonging, belonging to a group, friendship, affection, and love. Then we move into esteem needs, the need for achievement, mastery, independence, and respect, and that's where learning comes in, school-level learning, and then finally self-actualization, in other words, realizing your potential and seeking personal growth. And one of the reasons we utilized the K1 configuration and the 6-8 as well was to help to meet those lower-level needs because the K1 building provided a very nurturing environment for kids, and it was a safe environment where they could go into a small environment with people the same size and become acclimated to school. Then we could move them into a school that housed four grade levels, again, similar ages, similar sizes, and then over here, similar ages, similar sizes. So we felt that we were really meeting those needs because it's been proven that kids who are scared and don't have that belonging and that friendship don't learn as well. So we did that. The other thing, it allowed us to utilize buildings that were designed for specific instructional purposes. Our high school was designed as an open space when it was renovated in 1999, and that open space allowed students to move about in a pretty much unfettered manner. The commons area, the gymnasium lobby lend themselves to the social environment. It's appropriate for high school students in grades nine through 12. They can handle that freedom, they're ready for it. The shop areas, the labs, the gymnasiums were designed to accommodate curriculum across four grade levels when the building was renovated in 1999. Most buildings that are designed as junior/senior high school buildings have discreet physically separated wings that house students of differing grade levels and minimize the co-mingling of older and younger students. Our high school is not designed to do that in terms of the physical shape of the building, the plant, the way it's laid out. Southmoreland Middle School was completed in 2008, and it was designed to meet the specific needs of younger adolescents. If you notice, for example, one would be the wash sinks that are placed out in the hallway. Middle school kids like to cause problems in bathrooms, so you go into the restroom, you do what you have to do, you come out and wash your hands where somebody can be seeing what's going on. We have instructional wings here, instructional areas that are divided into wings by floors, so for the most part, all sixth graders remain on the bottom floor all day, and they're separated from the seventh and eighth graders. Seventh graders are on the floor that you're now on, eighth graders are upstairs, and the only time those kids are moving up and down stairs are for foreign languages, tech ed, lunch, library, those kinds of things, but for the most part, they're housed discreetly, so the sixth graders are in their own separate house, if you will, you know, where they're becoming acclimated to the middle school setting. Now, the enrollment has declined. Since 2000, we've lost about 500 kids. In response to that, we've eliminated 21 teaching positions and one and a half administrative positions. It's important to note, though, that in addition to the elimination of 21 teachers, we added programming. We added a full-day kindergarten program in 2004. We added two autistic support programs in 2009 and 2011, and we're adding another one this year. Had those new programs not been added, we would have reduced our teaching staff by 27 positions. It's also important to note that the implementation of a full-day kindergarten program, the addition of two autistic support programs, has increased room utilization by six classrooms. If we didn't have those programs, we would have six classrooms that we don't currently have right now. And again, in 1617, we're adding the third autistic support room. The addition of those classrooms adds personnel and space requirements to the district, but it also eliminates the need to transport students to remote locations. It eliminates the need to pay tuition to an out-of-district provider, and from a civil and human rights perspective, it allows more students with disabilities to attend their neighborhood schools. Ideally, in a couple of years, we need to look at adding an autistic support room to the high school so that those kids who are now enrolling in the middle school program, when they age out, they can continue to attend the Southmoreland School District and not be shipped off to Clearview or Playlean Heights or someplace that's not here. It also might be prudent in a year or two to explore the possibility of adding a life skills classroom to the middle school, because we have an elementary life skills program now. When those kids age out, we don't have a program for them, so we can either choose to send them somewhere and pay the tuition, or we can bring them back here. But again, that's going to be another classroom that's going to be needed. The grade level configuration we have right now provides some benefits that can't be measured in dollars and cents. It allows time in each teacher's schedule for collaborative teaming three times a week, and those teaming meetings design, develop, and pace curriculum. That's meeting number one. Meeting number two identifies and plans for students who require academic intervention, and meeting number three addresses student concerns for those kids who might be experiencing either academic or non-academic difficulty. Present grade level configuration provides instructional efficiency because travel between buildings is minimized. Previous configurations required several teachers to travel between buildings, and that travel required about a half an hour per teacher per day, and in some cases, we lost almost a full day of instructional time when you combined all those teachers together, depending on the specific school year's schedule. In the past, we've had elementary music teachers, elementary art teachers, secondary art teachers, librarians, nurses, phys ed teachers, Title I teachers, gifted support teachers, secondary tech ed teachers, social studies teachers, math teachers have all traveled. As important to student achievement that we as a school district, you know, think that is, we need to maximize the amount of time teachers are in front of kids and not driving back and forth. And the present grade level configuration has produced results. Southmoreland Middle School, as you know, is one of 10 breakthrough schools nationwide because we achieved results that exceeded expectations. Our elementary school was named the National Blue Ribbon School for the same reason. The high school has received a bronze medal for three out of the past four years from U.S. News &amp; World Report. The primary center and the elementary school both received governor's awards for academic excellence. In 2009, Southmoreland School District was ranked by the Pittsburgh Business Times, number 61 out of 105 school districts in the regions in terms of standardized test performance. Seven years later, we surpassed 31 school districts, and our ranking became 30 instead of 61 out of 105. Same publication ranked us as the 37th most overachieving district in the region in 2009. Seven years later, we're the top overachieving school district for the third year in a row. Statewide, the Business Times ranked us 291 out of 501 in 2007. By 2009, we're up to 264, and that was an increase of 27 places. By 2016, we had passed 172 schools and we're now 119 out of 500 districts. And these rankings are all based on aggregated and disaggregated PSSA and Keystone scores over a three-year rolling average. And the present configuration, I don't believe, has placed an undue burden on the local taxpayer, and I've included two tables for you that illustrate why I believe that. If you look at Westmoreland and Fayette Counties, we have a relatively small tax base and a small amount of revenue generated per mil compared to other districts, but yet our millage remains the second lowest in Westmoreland County and the fourth lowest in Fayette County. In terms of Fayette County, we're approximately 3/4 of a mil higher than the lowest millage rate, but we are 3.8 mils lower than the highest millage rate in Fayette County. So the dollars and cents, you know, it's not creating an undue burden on the taxpayer, and I have tables in there. And again, you asked me to conduct a utilization study, so I did that to the best of my ability. I looked at current classroom and program needs in terms of our instructional space, and I compared those needs to the spaces we have in what is now Southmoreland Elementary, Southmoreland Middle, and Southmoreland High School. And I was trying to determine if there was sufficient space in those three buildings to accommodate existing classes and programs without significantly increasing class size, eliminating positions, and eliminating programs. And I have a rather large table there where I actually listed every room and what its possible utilization might be, and I have them highlighted. I have rows that are highlighted in red, and that would denote a change in utilization for grade levels, depending on the configuration. I have rows that appear in green, and those would be rooms that might be vacant and currently are vacant, as a matter of fact, and then rows appearing in orange that denote classrooms or programs for which there is no space available. So depending on how we configure and what programs, you know, we decide that we no longer want, we could have a possible shortage of, and I figured a maximum, of 27 classrooms that I just don't have to put all the programming in, and that would include a lot of specialty areas, gymnasiums, shops, those kinds of things that we just can't, we don't have the space to do because of the current utilization of those rooms at the high school. If you look at the feasibility study that Echols did, you'll find out that these two buildings can accommodate up to 1,400 students, all right? But the PDE formula is flawed, and the architect will tell you that. As a matter of fact, there's even a disclaimer, I believe, in the study that talks about how their full-time equivalent formula is flawed. PDE building capacities reflect student capacity per classroom or per square foot. However, and then those formulas show that there's plenty of space for our students in this building, 1,400 of them, but they don't show the classrooms required to provide the curriculum that can be accommodated, and you can miss that when you look at FTE. For example, when PDE calculates full-time equivalency, they don't calculate for special education classrooms. They don't calculate for autistic support classrooms. They don't calculate for computer labs. They don't calculate for the specialized areas that accommodate the program and the curriculum we're trying to deliver here. It's kids per square foot, kids per classroom. And yeah, we can put those seats in classrooms and put kids there, but between trying to schedule all that and get the right rooms in the right buildings, it just doesn't always work. And I'm gonna, you know, Echols exactly, you know, said Southmoreland Middle School capacity summary. The building capacity based on PDE's FTE calculations is 766 students for this building. The current enrollment's 410 students. The building is therefore at 53% of its maximum capacity. Please note that special education classrooms are not figured into this calculation. It should also be noted that the percentage of utilization is theoretical and is not a direct representation of how the building is or should be utilized to deliver the educational program. The educational program and appropriate class sizes for the area of study all impact the overall utilization of the building. So when I did the little study that I did, I tried to look at the curriculum and the programs that we're trying to deliver and then fit them into the spaces, and I may be a room or two off, I'll be the first to tell you that, but I did walk through with maps and, you know, map out what rooms are utilized for, how many periods a day they're utilized, or how many periods a week, depending on whether it was high school or elementary, so I tried to be as accurate as I could. But considering all that, you know, we continue to recommend that the grade level configurations remain as they currently are, and that the board consider improvements to the Southmoreland Primary Center. And the only improvements that we're recommending are replacement of the boiler system because it's nearing the end of its useful life, providing some air conditioning in the building, and adjusting the air handling system to make those two systems work efficiently, and upgrading the electrical system to accommodate the boiler and the air conditioning system. Anything else in terms of the things that were suggested, especially through the Echols study, because they were, you know, talking about a lot of upgrades that cost a lot of money, we're recommending that we push the hold button on those. They're not things that are urgent, they're not things that are needed. You know, we're recommending a bare-bones improvement to, you know, get some air and adequate heating to the building, and that's the extent of it. So that concludes my summary of what's going on there, and again, I have tables included, and I apologize that some of you don't have computers that work in front of you, but you'll be able to see that, you know, once you get online, and I'll be happy to provide printed copies as well, so. I would entertain questions or comments.
What about, we talked about reconfiguring the office and doing something with the doorway that...
At the primary center?
Yeah.
Yeah. Our plan there is to very simply install a second buzzer system because we already have double doors there, and install a second camera. Very inexpensive. We looked at a proposal to put the office area across the hall near the entrance. That cost a lot of money, and with electronics the way they are and visibility with cameras, we didn't see a need for that, so we can monitor access remotely. Yes, Mr. Coler.
I know you've done a lot of work on this, Jack, and I appreciate all the work that you've done, and I'm not asking you to go back and do other work, but I know a lot of times we sit here and we discuss how we perform in relationship to other schools and other school districts, and you have laid out a very good case for leaving things exactly where they are in leaving K and first grade in one building and why we want to separate those age groups and grades and everything, and obviously it's worked here. I mean, we have good data and good results to show that. However, my question would be, is that the only model that works? Do other schools do K in one, or do they do K through eight, K through six? Do they use seven and eight with the high school? Again, I'm not saying that the model that we have does not work, but, you know, given what you just said, number one, we poorly designed our high school then. That high school should have been better designed so it could potentially house seven. I'm not saying it had to, but it could have. We're saying it really isn't well-suited to house the seventh and eighth grade, and that was the design that was made.
Many years ago, yeah, many years ago.
Right, and they said, that was the design. Yeah, not, but I said, that was the design, and so we're kind of locked into that because of the design of the building. But again, as I said, sometimes even though the best intentions that we have and the results that we get, sometimes we're forced into looking at alternatives, and I agree. If we're talking about only doing air handling and boilers and air conditioning, electrical, that's just basically maintaining the building we have to allow us to continue to do what we're currently doing and doing to the best of our ability.
Right.
What are we talking about, though, when we're doing that? Because again, if we're talking about spending $2 million to do that, then maybe there's other things that we need to say, well, maybe we can't afford to have the best possible model if we're going to go into great deal of debt. Do we know what air handling, boilers, air conditioning, electrical?
Yeah, I've been trying to pin Joe Price down on that, and I see Joe's here this evening. Those estimates come with the investment grade audit.
Right.
And the investment grade audit, if you choose to do a project, is part of the project. If you choose to walk away from it, it's a $10,000 bill.
So my question would be...
Let me finish. If we were to do the, I think it was 2.9 million was the top-end estimate for all of that, which I'm totally opposed to, I'll say that publicly, and I think you estimated that to be a $200,000 a year, that would mean that you would have a one-time tax increase of 1.5 mils that would be earmarked to pay for that. I don't like tax increases. You don't like tax increases. Nobody likes tax increases, but that's one way that it could be done. There is, you know, money in the fund balance. We don't like to spend that money. That's our savings account. That's another option. I don't believe that the improvements that administration is recommending will be anywhere near $2.9 million, and if they are, I'll bring a hat right here and heat it for you. I'll leave my hat there. But, you know, so, yeah.
I guess what I'm saying, though, is if we authorize the study and pay the $10,000, and we committed something that requires you to eat your hat, we're not going to, we're going to have to revisit this as to whether or not we keep it open, even if we vote to do that, because now we're talking, I mean, as I said the last time, the vote to keep it exactly the way it is cannot be a vote to automatically take whatever we get for an estimate for the repairs, because if we do that, that's what we're voting tonight. We're voting to agree to whatever the figure is for the repairs. I'm saying, if the figure for the repairs comes into something we don't like, then we have to go back and say that obviously, option one, which is to leave it the way it is, is invalid.
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, when you get the option, Jason can probably tell you a little bit more than I can about this, because he went through it at the CWCTC. There's a laundry list of things, you know. You want new windows, do you want new lights, do you want this, do you want that, do you want the other? And no, no, yes, no, 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 yes. So you pick and choose, you know, what you want, but to attach numbers to it, you know, we have to move ahead with the study. And the other problem I have, Bob, and I don't know how else to say, is I don't know that I have room to put our programs in the other two existing buildings. I just don't know how to squeeze it in.
You said you could maybe do eighth grade in there, and that would be, and that would be costly.
Mr. Alt had made a suggestion, you know, that maybe a group of board members or individual board members walk through and look at the available space. I would welcome that. I'll go with anybody and spend the time you would like me to spend. I'd ask that you don't ask me to do that within the next week and a half, which we're trying to get the school year off the ground, but any time after that, you know, I would be happy to do that. Looking at, you know, putting eighth grade there, if we were to just do that, eighth grade at the high school...
I know you've given me some figures. You'd actually produced something with a basic indication of what it would actually cost us over and above. You had teachers that would have to be moved back and forth, and you had some programs that would have to be altered. Again, I think you're right. I don't think seventh and eighth grade can both be housed up there, and I'm not even saying that we should house eighth grade up there. I'm just saying that I don't want a vote to take option one to automatically tie us in to repairing the primary center.
Right.
If the primary center bill comes in, let's say, let's say it comes in at $2 million to do all those basic repairs, then we should go back and revisit whether we want to use option one.
Right. Just to answer your question, with eighth grade only at the high school, I'm going to be hard-pressed to find space for choral instrumental music eight, because both of those rooms are booked all day. Phys ed eight, the gyms are currently in use all day. I have no space for eighth grade autistic support. Special ed eight, I don't have a space for social studies eight. STEM eight, information science eight, tech ed eight, and art instruction eight. And again, two more specials, so I'd be short three special ed rooms. So if we were to just move eighth grade there, those are the rooms that I would be hard-pressed to, or the programs that I would be hard-pressed to find spaces to have. to, or the programs that I would be hard-pressed to find spaces to have.
My opinion is, we're here, and our education level is really great. We start moving these kids around in other places, what's going to happen to our education? It's like building a house. You got the foundation now. We was in trouble a few years back with their education, wasn't winning anything. Here we are, now we want to start moving these kids around and putting them in with older kids, we're going to lose them mentally. Listen to older kids, you know how that is. And the foundation's already set. We take the foundation out there, we're going to lose the house, or we're going to lose our education, as far as I'm concerned.
And you may be right, Butch, but by the same...
But the only trouble is, Bob, you've got to realize something. We've got other options you're not even bringing up. Sell Rutherford, get rid of that. Go with this study with Johnson's. We don't have to, we might, we already spent, on Echols, how much money? $1,000. Okay, there wasn't an argument about that, was there? No, we spent that, but you don't want to go $10,000 to see where we're going.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that at all. I have no problem with the study, I'm just saying that getting the study, getting the figures, and then saying, no matter what the figures are, because we've already said we're doing option one, means you already bought into fixing that building. So what you're saying right now, Butch, is that it doesn't matter how much the final study is. If the final study is $2 million...
No, it's an idea, let's get the study and go from there, like he said, we can pick and choose.
Well, no, no...
The way you're saying, degrade the whole thing and move these kids...
No, 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 I'm not saying that, Butch, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm saying that when we get the figures for those absolutely necessary things that need to be done there, are you saying, no matter what they cost, because we've taken option one to keep it open, we're going to do that?
Yeah, but if you don't get, find out somebody that's going to do this to really find out what it's going to cost, what are we going to do? Sit here and play around till it keeps costing more money?
Excuse me, could I just make a suggestion? Don't pick an option tonight, but authorize, authorize an investment grade audit, so you know what it's going to cost you and what our options are.
Thank you, Jack.
Okay, I mean...
Why did we have to pick an option? Why were we going around with that the last couple of weeks?
I had asked you a couple of weeks ago to adopt option A.
Okay, so we didn't do that, so it's just...
On the facility study, I'd asked you to do that, you didn't do that. So I did give you some information, so I would recommend that we continue to table facility study, you have the information in front, hopefully you'll get it in front of you, that I gave you. And again, I'll be happy to print it out. And then we could move to Johnson Controls, and you could make a decision as to whether or not you want to move forward with an investment grade audit. And again, it doesn't cost anything if you proceed with some type of a project. If you don't, there's a $10,000 walkaway fee. Am I, my figures are correct, Jeff?
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion that we table the selection of an option for reconfiguration of the current grades.
Do you want to include also the $10,000 piece of...
Yes, you want to include...
Do that under...
Okay.
What's he, what's he making?
He's asking that we don't decide how we're going to configure anything right now, but get some information from Johnson. So for now, he has a motion on the floor to table the facility study.
Okay.
Okay, and if you vote to do that, then that'll remain his old business. Then we'll move to the next item, which is Johnson Controls. And I would assume somebody will make a motion then to proceed with an investment grade audit to get us more information, so that we're able to make a more intelligent decision in terms of how we want to configure, how much it's going to cost. We can move from there.
Is the investment grade audit only for...
The investment grade audit will cover the entire district.
Oh, well...
House and ever. You can, it's a menu. So we only want the appetizer, we don't want dessert, you know, you understand what I'm saying? So we don't have to choose, we don't have to choose to do anything in this building or anything at Rutherford's or anything at Scottsdale, we can choose the Alverton menu items.
So we have a motion by Mr. Clark, do we have a second?
Can I have it read? Motion read.
Table the facilities...
Table the facility study, that's it.
Second. Second by Mr. Beistel. You can just do, hear your name, right?
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero with two absent. Johnson Controls.
It's recommended that the board authorize Johnson Controls Incorporated to proceed with an investment grade audit of Southmoreland Facilities. There's no charge to the district for this service if the district proceeds with a guaranteed energy savings project. There's a $10,000 walkaway fee if the company completes the audit and the district chooses not to proceed with a project.
Need a motion, please?
I make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Love. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent.
May I, I'd like to thank you for your indulgence, I gave you a rather lengthy report on a pretty hot summer evening here, but I thank you for listening. And I do respect the fact, you know, as your superintendent, that we have board members who are trying to do their due diligence and not just go off totally uninformed on some kind of a decision that may or may not be the best. You know, you are the Board of Education, but sometimes you're also the Board of Finance too. And I recognize that, even though I will generally be pushing for the education side and then I'll fight with Mr. Marnell over the finances. So thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Jeff.
New business, WIDAC matching funds?
It's recommended that the board continue to match funds in the amount of $10,020 to support drug, alcohol, and violence prevention programs provided to Southmoreland by the St. Vincent Prevention Programs. WIDAC is Westmoreland County Drug and Alcohol Commission.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mr. Frye, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes, yes. Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Northwestern Human Services?
It's recommended that the board approve contracts with Northwestern Human Services Schools in Hermonie and Greensburg to provide special education services to selected disabled children in the Southmoreland School District. A copy of the proposed agreement is attached along with rates from the previous school year.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Love, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes, yes. Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent.
School-based access program? It's recommended that the board approve Southmoreland's continued participation in the school-based access program. Letter of agreement is attached to your board docs, the program allows district to build the Department of Human Services for medically necessary services that the district provides to eligible students.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Colero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions?
Just to give you an idea, those medically necessary services are generally speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes, yes. Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Policy service animals in schools?
It's recommended that the board approve the policy on service animals in schools. The policy has been posted for 30 days, more than that actually.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mr. Frye, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. Naloxone policy?
It's recommended that the board post a policy that outlines the parameters for the use of naloxone in school district, in schools. During the posting period, it will be reviewed, and it actually already was reviewed and amended by the solicitor. So we'll post the revisions that he made as part of the policy, and then we'll have the nursing staff and the school physician review it and develop standing orders before final adoption.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven zero with two absent. COMDOC copier lease agreement?
I'll read the motion, and once we get a motion and a second, I have a little bit of explanation for you. This is not something we talked about last week, because it has been coming back and forth, and we finally arrived at an agreement yesterday.
I'm going to suggest, when you make the motion, a couple of words to be added.
That's, I think I already added them. It's recommended that the board extend the district's lease agreement with COMDOC contingent upon administrative and solicitor approval of all documentation for the provision of copy machines and services for a period of two additional years, which would bring our total of 48 months, at a monthly cost of $10,588.39. This includes upgraded copy machines, a monthly savings to the district of $27.50, and a $5,000 rebate if the machines are installed during the month of August.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions or comments?
Yeah, just by way of explanation, I had this on board docs, but not all of you have access to it. The copy machines that we currently have in place have not been working properly and haven't been working properly since they arrived. And I see some nodding heads back there. One machine is down at least on a daily basis throughout the district. So in our discussions with our copier provider, COMDOC, it's been determined that the problem is a twofold problem. The first problem is that COMDOC may have underestimated the volume requirements, and therefore, we might have had some undersized machines in here. And the second problem is that the volume that passes through those machines causes a great deal of wear and tear on the machines, and thus, the machines don't work properly. The third problem, which I didn't list in here, is machines tend to jam. Teachers who might have five minutes to, you know, be between periods or between classes to run to the restroom and grab their copies, attempt to unjam the machine, are unsuccessful because their teachers are not copier technicians. So consequently, anybody that comes down the line after them has no access to the copiers. So COMDOC and Noah's here, and we're going to open the floor to questions of Noah. I'm going to put you on the spot there, sir, when I'm done here. But they proposed a solution that we're able to support. Currently, there are two years left on the original five-year contract for the present machines. COMDOC asked us for a three-year extension. In exchange for this extension, they would upgrade the copiers to a much higher-capacity machines that are theoretically able to handle the demands of our schools. I think they refer to them as horses, right, workhorses. We weren't comfortable in recommending a three-year extension based on the performance of the current machines. And I have to compliment COMDOC's service people, that they do show up and fix the machines almost every day. So we were able to negotiate a proposal with COMDOC for a two-year extension of the current agreement that includes the upgraded equipment, a slight decrease in the monthly cost, and a $5,000 rebate. And there's a copy of the proposal attached. And again, we didn't put it on your info packet, didn't talk about it last week, because we just completed our negotiations yesterday. So questions or comments? And I'll defer most of those to Noah back there.
Before we get to directing them, the simple math of this is, we are spending $120,000 a year for copying. It is 10, 5, 8, 8 per month, correct?
Yes.
And that's assuming that we don't go over the allowable copies, because then there's surcharges for additional copies.
Our overages are very minimal.
Let's say there's no overage, it's $127,000. That's half of the tax increase we just authorized. We are moving into, and this is a bad time to say this, obviously, we're moving into the electronics. You'd hope that we wouldn't be doing as much copying, unfortunately, it doesn't always work, so we need to pay for copies. But you would think at some point here that we would be reducing considerably the amount that we're spending to copy material. Now, I understand that there's going to be a period where we're switching over, and it may take time, but if we're extending this for two additional years, we're saying that for four years, we don't see any improvement in our photocopying expenses, despite the fact that we're paying for chromes and trying to get kids to work electronically and having information electronically, rather than having to copy things and get them out to them copies, or teachers using copies. Why, what's the purpose of these machines if we're making tons of copies? Just an observation.
And you're absolutely correct, and our Chromebook transition is in its infancy. You know, one of the things that's currently happening is teachers are copying, now they're making copies offline rather than purchasing textbooks, and it's a culture change. Teachers and administrators need to learn how to have students accessing material on, and kids need to learn that as well. And we need to make sure that kids have access to their Wi-Fi, not only here at school but at home. And there's some work going on there, our libraries are now Wi-Fi. So we are in that transition period. Copier leases are expensive, you are correct, I absolutely agree.
And the transition is fine, that's why I'm concerned about making it a four-year contract, really, basically, from this point forward. Because what we're saying is that it's going to take us four more years before we transition enough that we can even, we're going to pay this no matter what, that's our contract. So we're going to pay $120,000 a year, but the next four years, a half a million dollars, it's going to take us four years to transition into not using as many copies or needing photocopy machines. That's what I'm saying, I'm saying, you know, you said at the end of the two years, you'd say, okay, now was the transition, we won't use that. But we've tacked on guaranteeing COMDOC two additional years of $120,000 a year. I'm a little concerned that that's locking us in again, especially if we actually do transition and start reducing the amount of paper that we use. It won't matter, we're still going to pay $120,000 a year.
This is why we fought with COMDOC yesterday, actually pounded on the table and fought to get us to two years. They wanted three. To get the machines to where they need to be, to meet the current needs and demands is going to require a pretty sizable capital investment on their part, so they need some return on their investment, we need some machines that work. That was the best compromise that we could negotiate. Jim, jump in here.
Any options?
Do we, do you put this out for bid, or it just...
We've got to do the contract...
Yeah, we have two years on the current contract, so this would extend the current contract. We can bid it, we're not required to bid it because it's a lease. So if the contract were up, we would be putting it out to bid.
That's why they want to get an extension because they're afraid he might live it.
Yeah.
You have to put it.
Well, that and you want to upgrade the machines. With no extension, we have what we have.
Now, are you going to be guaranteed that these machines is what you want and they're going to do the job, not like before?
We have a letter to that effect and we will have the solicitor review that before we.
So what we got before, we weren't guaranteed that those machines would work? The contract that we current have didn't guar, like you said, they underestimated what the capacity would be needed. They have no liability for that underestimation. We're just stuck with that because that was what they estimated.
They have upgraded several machines for us at their cost.
Okay.
But not all of them. There are approximately twenty machines throughout the district.
And I guess what Butch is saying is we do this and they come back in two years and they say, well, it isn't quite capacity. We'll upgrade ten of them, but not all of them because even though the contract said we guarantee that, they guaranteed us that on this contract that we're not getting what we were guaranteed. I'm assuming there was a guarantee in there?
We have a letter indicating that any machine that is not, and there's a specific number of service calls per month, and any machine that exceeds that will be replaced.
If you have a service call, it doesn't mean anything or you're going to have a machine anymore in your job.
Right. And what the letter is, is a guarantee that if there is more than X amount of service calls per month, the machine goes and a new one comes.
Yeah, the question is, is it worth the two-year extension for basically a quarter of a million dollars?
Any other questions?
This has to be decided tonight.
They want it signed.
There's a five thousand dollar rebate if you decide tonight. Doesn't have to be decided tonight.
What are we going to do? We have an ongoing contract with them already, so, I mean, we don't agree to this. They're going to keep the same copy machines that are in there.
That's correct.
It'll be done in two years.
For two years.
So we need a motion to table it or a motion to move forward with the?
There's a motion to, uh, sorry.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, he needs to vote.
Yeah. So roll call, please.
Mr. Fry?
No.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes, yes. Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
No.
Mr. Benz?
No. So, four.
Four, three.
Four, three, two. Four in favor, three against, and two abstain, or, I'm sorry, absent.
Right, so motion carries, correct, Dave?
No, you're dealing with spending money, don't you find?
Motion fails. Transportation van?
And Jim, do we have any updated information on the van? No updated information on the van. We're still in the search process. I know Laura is working with a company, another part of the state, and I forget the name. The complication on the van, which I was unaware of or I just didn't remember, was that the vans that are spec come with what's called a manual operator door, like a school bus has. So you can buy a van with the passenger capacity, but the van has to be taken to a specialty shop to be retrofitted for the door. And I think that's why we got no bids on it because of that. So we don't have a price yet. The company that Laura and Charlie's working with said they would get back to them. So right now, we don't have a van to propose. So we'd recommend just be tabled? Continue the search. Yes, table.
Do we have a motion to table this?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Colero, second by Mr. Beistel. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Roughdale Elementary School?
It's recommended that the board direct administration to research options for the possible sale of the former Roughdale Elementary School, including subdivision of the property, to retain ownership of the athletic fields.
Need a motion, please?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mrs. Love, second by Mr. Beistel. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Need a motion to recess to executive session for personnel? Is there personnel and tax litigation?
I don't.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Secondly, Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven, zero, two absent. Mr. Beistel. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes two to zero with two absent, sorry, seven to zero, two absent. Head Boys and Girls Golf Coach.
It's recommended that the board accept the resignation of Jean Spadero as Head Boys and Girls Golf Coach and authorize the posting of the position.
Need a motion, please?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Secondly, Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven, zero, two absent. Middle School Girl Soccer Coach.
It's recommended that the board approve Jean Spadero as a middle school girl soccer coach with a supplemental salary of two thousand eight hundred and one dollars for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Colero, second. Secondly, Mr. Fry, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Assistant Wrestling Coach.
It's recommended that the board accept the resignation of Gavin Sikorski as assistant wrestling coach, approve him as a volunteer wrestling coach, and authorize administration to post the position.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Fry, second.
Second.
Secondly, Mrs. Rhodes, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Varsity Head Baseball Coach.
It's recommended that the board approve Dan Boring as the varsity head baseball coach with a supplemental salary of three thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year.
Need a motion, please?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second. Secondly, Mr. Colero. Roll call, please.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Or abstain? Abstain. Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Abstain, motion passes five to zero with two abstains and two absent. Middle School Football Coach.
It's recommended that the board approve Jason Vandemere as a middle school head football coach with a supplemental salary of three thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Colero, second.
Second.
Secondly, Mr. Beistel, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Kindergarten Team Leader.
It's recommended the board approve Amber Sernudo as kindergarten team leader with a supplemental salary of two thousand five hundred dollars.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Love, second.
Second.
Secondly, Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Special Education Pair Professionals.
It's recommended that the board hire the following pair of professionals to fill positions within the special education department. Brandy Vay, Ashley Swank, Sarah Marks, Tina Petter, Renee Miklos, Kaitlin Zigger, Barb Lemley, and Kevin Mundrich, senior.
Need a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Secondly, Mrs. Rhodes, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Two thousand sixteen Bus Drivers.
It's recommended that the board approve the two thousand sixteen list of bus drivers. It'll be two thousand sixteen, seventeen action.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Secondly, Mr. Fry, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Student Helpers.
It's recommended that the board approve Jake Smithola and Brendan Hickson as casual student helpers.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Love, was that Mr. Colero? Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Sophomore Class Sponsor.
It's recommended that the board accept the resignation of Victoria Brodak as sophomore class sponsor and authorize administration to post a supplemental position.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Fry, second.
Second.
Secondly, Mrs. Rhodes, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero with two absent. FMLA.
It's recommended that the board approve an FMLA lead for middle school math teacher, Kelly Blaze, for approximately eight weeks, beginning on October twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen.
Need a motion, please?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Secondly, Mrs. Rhodes, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Oops, sorry, Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Two thousand sixteen Delegate Assembly.
It's recommended that the board appoint Chuck Fry and Gail Rhodes as voting delegates to the two thousand sixteen PSBA Delegate Assembly.
Need a motion, please?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Secondly, Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Long-term Substitute Teachers.
It's recommended that the board employ Brian Strickler and Katie Moore as long-term substitute teachers in the areas of high school science and high school social studies respectively at a salary of thirty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars, which is step B1 minus five thousand dollars as negotiated in the collective bargaining agreement between the Southmoreland School District and the Southmoreland Education Association.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Colero, second.
Second.
Secondly, Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Day-to-day Substitutes.
It's recommended that the board approve Gretchen Zeglin and Eleanor Wolf as day-to-day non-professional substitutes and approve Edwin Sommers as a day-to-day substitute custodian and school security staff member.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Colero, second.
Second.
Secondly, Mrs. Love, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero with two absent. Report, CWCTC report?
The JOC does not meet in July, so I don't have a report.
Thank you. WIU report?
We also do not meet in July.
Thank you.
Need to follow that policy.
ESBA liaison report?
I have no reports there.
Superintendent's report?
Custodians and maintenance crews have been busy readying the buildings for the opening of school. We should be able to present ourselves very nicely when our students return, and I want to thank those folks for a job nicely done. They've been working pretty hard all summer. A lot of our teachers have already been in to prepare their classrooms, and I wanted to just recognize those individuals who have come in unpaid on their own time for their extra time and effort.
We do appreciate them coming in to prepare themselves to be ready to hit the ground running on day one. Mr. Swink held the annual coaches' meeting on August 11. Coaches were oriented with respect to heat conditioning, concussion and cardiac training, safety, hazing, and district procedures and expectations, so that happened this afternoon. Had the pleasure of attending that meeting as well. Building-level teams have been meeting throughout the summer to recognize building accomplishments, list concerns, and develop building-level action and improvement plans, so those will be ready to go when we kick off the year as well. This is something I need you to check your calendars for. The Second Annual Westmoreland County Forum for Workforce Development Program and Banquet will be held on Wednesday, September 14 at the Greensburg Country Club from 5:30 to 8:30. I will be there. I've been attending these forum meetings right along. We also encourage as many of you to attend as can. The idea behind the forum is to find ways for schools throughout the county to work with local industry, to develop a workforce that meets the needs of our county employers so we can keep our population here and attract more industry to our area as well.